Welcome to That's Based. Happy WTF Wednesday. We're doing this every Wednesday in October. I'm your host, as always, Caleb Salvatore, reporting from somewhere underground. We're laughing our way through the end of days. Brought to you by Outlaw Streamers and our friends over at Live 365 on Chris Baker Radio and of course Drink Blood of Tyran's Wines. Drinkbloodoftyrants.com with the promo code BASED, B-A-S-E-D, like the title of the show. You'll save 10% off your order at the checkout. They've got two types of wine, both red and white, along with the liquid freedom energy drink. If you go to drinkbloodoftyrants.com right now and use the promo code BASED, B-A-S-E-D, like the title of the show, you will save 10% off your order at the checkout, but you have to do it right now. You have to go to drink. Well, no, that's a lie. You can do it whenever. The link always works. The promo code always works. You have to go to drinkbloodoftyrants.com and use the promo code BASED, though, if you want to save 10% off your order at the checkout. All right. Like I said, it is WTF Wednesday. We are doing this every Wednesday in October. By the way, if you haven't already, I'm supposed to get better about this. If you're listening to us on audio, hit the little subscribe button. Okay. If it's on Apple Podcasts or whatever, if it's on Apple or Spotify or I don't, whatever. If it's on one of those apps where you can rate us, drop us a five star review. Share it around with your friends. Let people know. If you're on YouTube, like, subscribe, rumble, same thing. What do they say? Smash the like button? Is that what the pedophiles on these apps say? Anyway, do all the things. Buy from the sponsors. Support the show. Okay. Stockholm me of the red face of white supremacy is here. What, what's going on with these stories this week? I'm going in blind.
Well, we've got our Nessie.
Yeah.
Nessie story, obviously. I was able to find one. We've also we've got a dead dog story, but I promise it's kind of has kind of a funny ending.
Okay.
Psychic and then Snake Wife.
All the classics here, all the classics. Nessie, dead dogs, psychics and snake wives. Well, yeah, this looks like a marital dispute in India here for this first one. We'll go to that one first. Indian man claims murderous wife turns into snake and tries to bite him. Sounds legit. An Indian man claims his wife has been trying to kill him by transforming into a snake at night and attempting to bite him. The terrified husband identified as Mirage reportedly made the astonishing assertion at a regularly scheduled community gathering where residents bring their problems to local leaders. So he brought this to the local like politicians. This is like, should I go? When's the next city council meeting? Wins the I swear to God, I will do it. I will go to the next city school board meeting. There you go. Even better. I will go to the next school board meeting and tell them that Mia is transforming into a snake at night and trying to murder me in my sleep. What do you think they would do if I did that?
Probably kick you out.
They have to give me my time. It's my right. If I'm not using profanity or threats, they have to let me talk. That's how someone we know gets away with it. Says while the issues raised at such meetings generally involve mundane matters such as roads needing repair, this particular meeting took a fancy. Yeah. So he literally went to the city council meeting and it's like, hey, my wife transforms into a cobra every night and tries to murder me in my sleep. That's literally what this guy's doing here. Fantastic turn with proverbial spotlight fell upon the man and shared the strange tale of marital discord addressing the district magistrate Mirage declared my wife Nassiman. Nassiman, what an unfortunate name, turns into a serpent at night and runs after me to bite me. So how does he get away every night? Does he have to like lock himself in the boat? What's going on here?
He's just in constant terror every single night.
Man, you guys.
Does he know where his wife is at night?
That's a great question. That's a great. Where is the wife? Maybe she's out fucking around on him and there's a snake in the house or something. As the beleaguered husband indicated that the troubling situation had occurred on multiple occasions with his life only being spared because he woke up in time to thwart her supernatural attacks. Has he considered it might be a dream? Could it be that?
Has he considered divorce?
There's also divorce. I'm just saying. If you wake up and the attacks stop, it might be a dream. Has he considered talking to his wife about this? Perhaps counseling, marital counseling.
One of his wives just is like really chill girl. Like she's like super nice. Like they have no problems.
Yeah, I feel like there's a couple steps that he needs to take to address this before going to the city council to get this handled. Fearing that his luck may soon run out Mirage lamented that his wife tortures him mentally and could kill him any night while he's asleep. For her part, she's yet to respond to her husband's jaw dropping allegation, which is, which is roundly mocked on Indian social or has been roundly mocked on Indian social media by residents who found his odd story to be rather ridiculous. You know, it's bad when the Indians are mocking you. That's not good when the Indians are mocking you. That said, local officials appear to be taking the matter more seriously with police about launching an investigation into Mirage's complaint of possible mental harassment on the part of his wife. She might be trying to, maybe she's not transforming. Maybe she's throwing the snake in the bed to try to kill him and make it look like an accident. Have we considered that? He might be like somewhat pointed in the right direction here. I think that's something that's worth considering. Okay, let's go to the next.
I just want to know why he felt the need to bring it up at a city council.
City council, not the, not the cops, the city council, where you talk about like potholes and stop signs and playgrounds, right? All right. Badly injured British woman laments ignoring psychic's eerily accurate warning. Oh, boy. A British woman badly injured in an accident believes that her mishap was predicted by a psychic who issued an eerily accurate warning on her months later. Spooky story reportedly began in April of 2024 when Hannah Roper visited a fortune teller. I just lost the page. What the fuck? When Hannah Roper visited a fortune teller with the hopes of discovering what the future had in store for her during the session, the soothsayer shared a weird warning cautioning the woman against venturing to the town of Fenton, and if she did, be mindful of her drinking. The specificity, specificity, sorry, of the advice was enough to convince Roper to head to the fortune, heed the fortune teller's words for six months until one fateful day. She slipped up in tragedy, so she could not stay away from that town is what she's saying. I think she'd forgotten the warning or believed the window danger had passed in October last year. She found herself splitting a bottle of wine to the friend at dinner, then traveling home to the home of another acquaintance who just so happened to live in the town of Fenton. After a few more drinks at the friend's house, she went to use the restroom, but mistakenly passed through the cellar door instead. The error proved costly as she swiftly tumbled down the stairs and suffered brain bleeding from the treacherous fall. The accident necessitated months of rehabilitation that included part of her skull being replaced with a metal plate. Looking back on her harrowing experience, she's certain the psychic for saw. Yeah, I'm not gonna lie. That's I usually make fun of the psychics on here. That one's kind of weird. I'm not gonna lie. That one, that one creeps me out a little bit. I didn't go for months and then I went and this happened. She mused insisting that the psychic predicted the accident. Yeah, that, that's, I don't know. This one, this one irks me a little bit. I think somebody, like I said, I don't dismiss the possibility that people are in touch with another realm. I certainly don't. I would be concerned about anyone who is actively using it or welcoming it. I think you're opening, holding the door open for some beings that may not have your best interest at heart, but I certainly, I mean, I believe in other dimensions and things like that. So I don't see why people here on earth wouldn't possess the ability to access them. With that said, the majority of the people you guys are seeing at malls and places like that are con artists and nothing more, nothing less. With that said, this one bugs me. What do you think?
I just think that's one really expensive night of drinking.
That's a lot of money. An ER bill?
Yeah.
Well, it's in England, so it's free, but she had to wait six months to get in.
She had to wait six months to fix her brain.
Yeah. In Canada, they just give her a gun and tell her to shoot herself, but in England here. Yeah, no, that would be an expensive night out. I've had some expensive nights out, but nothing compared to that. Okay, let's go to the next one. Driver with dog forced to dig animal's grave by its angry gun wielding owner. Well, he should have made him dig his grave too. A wild story. Of course, it was in Texas. A motorist who struck and killed a dog was allegedly forced to dig the unfortunate animal's grave by its gun wielding owner. The incident, which came to light this week reportedly occurred on September 8th in the city of Mineola, when the victim was cruising down a road and inadvertently hit the poor pooch. Upon pulling over to assess the situation, the motorist was quickly met by an angry Alberto Joshua Hernandez, who brandished a gun and indicated he was the dog's owner. What followed was the hair, was a harrowing ordeal where the victim later told police had him scared to death. Distraught over his pet's passing, cops say Hernandez ordered the driver to retrieve the animal's remains from the side of the road before snatching the motorist's keys and cellphone and forcing him to do. I feel that's a safe trade. You know, you kill my dog, you can at least dig the grave, dig a hole to bury the gray or bury the dog. Satisfied with the impromptu grave, the gun wielding man allegedly took the victim to a nearby ATM where the driver was strong armed into what drawing $200. Also reasonable. Look where the fuck you're going. He, listen. I know every bank's a little bit different, but the max withdrawal limit on ATM cards is almost always more than $500. This guy didn't go for the max. He found a number that he felt was reasonable for him killing his dog. And he's like, all right, this is it. I'm not trying to rob you blind. I'm not trying to bankrupt you, even though I probably should. I want a couple hundred bucks so I can go out and get drunk and, you know, forget about the dog and that's it. Hernandez ultimately released the terrorized motorist with the ominous promise that he would find the man if he did not pay an additional unspecified sum for the incident. The driver later reported the unimaginable incident to the police who promptly arrested the dog owner for aggravated robbery and kidnapping. I mean, I get it. I get it. I understand where the dog owner's coming from. Did you see there was a convicted murderer in North Carolina stabbed to death a child rapist in prison the other day? I mean, I think we should be giving these people some types of awards. Like at least let me buy the murderer cigarettes. You know what I'm saying? Let me put some money on his books, something like that. Same thing with this guy. Mr. Hernandez, if you are a smoker, I will buy you cigarettes, prison cigarettes while you're in there for your stay. Do you have anything you'd like to add? You think he was reasonable? Did he act out?
I think so. I want to know what the other unspecified amount was.
He didn't say. He just said, hey, you better, I'm gonna come kill you if you don't give me this other amount at another time. Don't worry about how much it is. All decided at the moment. And it might not be enough. That might not, that might not be the final amount. There might be a third installment here. You don't know what it's gonna be. I wonder why he picked 200 bucks and then was like, I'm gonna come back for more later. Why not just get it all now?
That might be all he had.
Maybe they did like a balance check. That's a good point. Yeah. Cause you can do this.
IOU.
Yeah. Yeah. He had to write an IOU to the robber. That's how you know you're broke. When somebody tries to mug you at gunpoint and you have to give them an IOU. Like at that point, it's time to get on the, the rice and beans, beans and rice diet. You know what I'm saying? All right. Okay. Last one. Vacationing couple spots Loch Ness monster. Couple vacationing at Loch Ness spotted an unusual anomaly that emerged from the water and left them wondering if they'd just seen the site's legendary monster. According to a local media report, the sighting occurred this past Sunday as Erica and something Caca were walking along the shore of the sizable lake, visiting the popular destination from their home in Malta. The couple experienced what many visitors to Loch Ness dream of when they noticed an odd dark form break the surface of the water. And we have an image. This is what these people dream of. This is what they dream of.
It's what I dream of.
Yeah. A log in the water. We got no doubt hoping to bring home the ultimate keepsake from their visit to Loch Ness. Well, what do you mean bring home? Were they gonna take the monster home with them? The witnesses from Malta managed to capture some of their sighting on video, which can be seen, blah, blah, blah. Alas, the Caucas provided no additional details surrounding their experience content or contend to simply report that the odd event and then continue or could report the odd event and then continue on their vacation. What do you think they spotted at Loch Ness? Let us know in the comments, YouTube, rumble, that's based with Caleb Salvatore, Facebook page and group. What do you think they spotted? Was this the monster?
It definitely was.
Watch all these humps that we're making fun of. It actually, it's, we're gonna find out one day it was the monster and it's gonna be egg all over my face.
I would love, I would love to be proven wrong.
I, I would too. Absolutely. I would too. And we'll bring A O N O Foudhagen on here and he can call me a piece of shit and all that. Well, I got a story. I told you I was gonna research some local legends here and we tell some spooky stories here in the Omaha metro area. So I got one for you. So did you know this story, Mia? Do you know what happened in Council Bluffs, Iowa on December 17th, 1977? No? The audience can't hear you?
No.
So at 7:45 PM on December 17th, 1977, several people in Council Bluffs were just kind of going about their evening and hanging out, you know, probably just finished up with dinner, about to sit down and maybe watch a Christmas movie or something, maybe wrap presents. Go look at the lights, whatever the case may be. And 7:45 PM, a reddish fireball type object fell from the sky from about 600 feet toward Big Lake Park. So it disappeared behind like a whole thing of trees. And then there was this giant bluish white flash, which the witnesses described as having, and I quote, arms of fire, AKA flames, shooting up 10 feet. We can't expect the Council Bluffians to be literate. I expect that. I imagine the Council Bluffs residents here, we're, we're talking like cavemen at this, oh, the fire. Oh, cause they're, they're stupid, you know? It says witnesses, 11 independent witnesses, along with fire and local police have very similar recounts of the incident. So at the site, there was found a pool or blob of glowing molten metal on the ground covering about four by six feet. The metal was still glowing and warm sometime several hours after the arrival. The grass under and around was burned. The metal was hot enough that the parts could not be immediately handled. Some witnesses reported seeing a hovering red object or craft with lights around the periphery right before the crash. So the investigators took it back. Once it cooled down and they brought it to Offit Air Force Base, right over in Bellevue, where Mia used to live. And samples of it were collected. You had a guy named, excuse me, a company named the Griffin Pipe Products Company. It was a metal company and Iowa State University took a look at it because everyone was saying, okay, this is probably just a meteor, right? It's molten hot, whatever. But that's not what the results of the testing said. The testing actually found that it was high carbon steel, which is common in the manufacturing of aircrafts, right? So it's not a meteor. It's not an asteroid. Here's the problem. They checked with Epley. They checked with Offit. They checked with all the small airports in the area. None of them had a missing flight. There were no planes. There were no helicopters. There were no balloons. Nothing was missing. So they've got this giant hunk of metal in the middle of the park in Council Bluffs in Christmas time in 1977, and they didn't know where it came from. A giant hunk of metal on fire, meaning it likely burned through the atmosphere, crashed into the ground and nobody knows where it came from.
Did they check with Santa Claus?
It wasn't Christmas Eve. Do you think he was like getting a head start?
Yeah, he was just making his rounds. He was watching them.
What do you think Jewish parents tell their kids about Santa? Do you think they say he's anti Semitic?
Yeah.
So it says, so, so I mean, yeah, that's, that's the thing. So yeah, it's, it's hot. It's on fire. You've got no aircrafts in the area that were reported missing. It wasn't a meteor, but it came through the atmosphere. You've got several witnesses reported shortly before seeing it called into 911 to report a hovering craft in the area? I don't know. It remains to be seen. You gotta hit him with the X-Files or something there. It remains to be seen. I stared off into the distance for dramatic effect. What do you think it was? The 1977 Council Bluffs UFO?
I don't know. Maybe some as they checked with all of the like surrounding airports.
With all the surrounding airports, there were no, well, here's the thing, even if they didn't, you know, you have something explodes and you know, goes down in a fiery crash. If there's someone piloting it, don't you think there'd be like a missing persons report? Like, hey, my husband, the pilot took off and I haven't seen him in three weeks. None of that happened.
I don't know.
Interesting.
Maybe it was the big man himself.
God?
Santa Claus.
That's, that's right before Tim Allen took over, right? In Santa Claus. Yeah. That's, that's how that happened. That's, uh, yeah. Anyway, you get to look up next week's local legend. Okay?
No, next week. I forgot this week to do the Ed and Lorraine.
Oh, yeah. Do Ed and Lorraine Warren next week. There you go.
I'll do that next week.
There you go. Perfect. Now you all have something to look forward to. I wanted to talk about the Council Bluffs UFO because it's always fascinated me. That has been our show. We will see you, let you beautiful folks on Saturday. Like I said, like, subscribe, share around, drop a five star review. If you haven't already, follow us on Facebook. That's based with Caleb Salvatore or my Twitter and Instagram. Caleb is funny. Caleb Salvatore comedy on the Tik Tok. What were you gonna say?
I was gonna tell people it's our anniversary today.
Oh, well, yesterday technically.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, it was our anniversary. We went out to some very fine dining at Cheddar's for our anniversary. No, it was a good time though. It was a good time. It was, uh, we took the dog out and he got scared of the fountains at the park. It was a great time. It's a great time. If you don't wish us a happy anniversary, you're dead to me, by the way. Do it in the comments. Oh, yeah. October 11th, this Saturday, Beach House Bar and Grill. Roast battles are back. Starts at 9:00 PM. The Husker game's at 2:30. You have no excuse to miss it. We only do this a couple of times a year. I will be donating my portion of the proceeds to a family that needs a little bit of help. It's a kid my brother coaches. I'm not going to tell you the kid's name because I don't want you weirdos doxing my brother who has nothing to do with any of my antics, but it's a kid my brother coaches who lost a everything in a fire. So I'll be donating my portion of the proceeds to help them with bills and whatever other expenses they need. October 11th, if you want to just donate, you can Venmo Mia. We've always got that as an option as well. We'll drop that in the description. October 11th, Beach House Bar and Grill. That's the time to do it. All you guys that are talking all that shit, talking all that shit about how, oh, if you're pro gun, you deserve to get whacked. Now's your big chance to do it. I'll be live on stage. I won't be she's shaking her head off air saying, stop it. Now's your chance, pussies. All right. We'll see you on Saturday. We know you and ain't none of you showing up in person. Cheat on your taxes, not your spouse and stay based. Now's your chance, pussies. Alright, we'll see you on Saturday. We know, uh, you ain't none of you showing up in person. Cheat on your taxes, not your spouse and stay based.